I appreciate it, we just want to be timely and there's a very busy agenda. This is not working, I need a booster seat for this chair. Pass one from the theater to the theater, how is it? Alright, we're starting. This meeting of the Mala Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physical and present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other business or schools. Those procedures can be found in the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for community purposes only. Anyone wishing to be in the meeting may do so by Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 840-2040-9675, and the required password is 721935. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Lamb, would you be able to call please?
Mr. Conflue?
Here.
Mr. De Silva? Mr. Denise?
Here.
Mr. Gallo?
Here.
Mr. News?
Here.
Mr. Fitzmorrissey? Ms. Jensen? Dr. Morton?
Here.
And student representative, Miss Silva.
Alright, adequate notice that the agenda for this meeting has been provided to the rigid news pending record specifying that the Mala Board of Education will meet on May 21st, 2025 in Glenope Meadows School, 160 Ridge Road, Mala High School. A copy was filed, which is currently closed. Uh, Mr. Conflue, would you be able to message this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and a vision for all.
Alright, um, we do need our executive session, but we're going to push things a little bit. So we're going to skip down at this point to number seven, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This portion of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you're referring to in your question. Alright, any motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, and second by Mr. Gallo. Alright, we are officially open to the public. Alright, CEO, we come forth at this time, any motion to close the meeting to the public? Um, Mr. Gallo and Mr. Conflue. Alright, we are going to have our Mala student representative, Miss Silva. Because I think she has somewhere to get to. Thank you.
So to start off, last Friday, the Mala Club hosted, uh, probably comes small in the new apartment. But we did a job. Tonight is a new weekend, I was watching previous movie, any of these commercials playing for everybody? With sports, girls enters across tennis and baseball, are all, are all the youngsters. And also next Friday, May period, from six to nine, and Saturday, May thirty first, from twelve to two. The Mala High School Art Club is hosting the annual art and design exhibit, where it will be displayed in another lobby through to the T3 building over shop, and all community members are invited to attend that. More of the theater, the Metropolitan High School Awards, we have three nominees. The first being is Appleton for Abstaining Performance, George Petraszky, the God of Design, and Amy Zizzi, the President of the Church, all of them. Uh, last night, we had a concert with Sonic and his song were performed. Tomorrow, we'll have the choir concert, and next Thursday, May twenty ninth, is the St. Peter's concert, which is the work show.
Thank you very much. You may leave. What, what did you say? Okay, I'm not understood. It's, oh. Oh, did? Alright, enjoy. Maybe just something right here. Alright, Dr. Dittura, you have a very full report this evening, so let's get started.
We do, um, we have a number of things on the like persons of awards, well, we did. The first part of my report is very special. Today, in honor of going to the Glenone Arena to honor our teachers of the year. Um, as you will hear for the next couple of minutes, the teachers going from our K3s up to our high school are absolutely special teachers that impact so many of our students and really looking forward to celebrating them today.
So as Dr. Dittura shared, earlier today, we were able to celebrate our district's honorees, most were sitting in seats in front of us, and as you can see in both of these images taken from the event. Um, what awesome people we were able to highlight this afternoon and are going to highlight this evening. Uh, emphatically, when announcing each district at today's luncheon, Mala was the loudest in the cause for our people and with good reason. So tonight, we are proud to introduce the Burton County Educators of the Year for Mala Schools, exceptional individuals who represent a heart of our district. These honorees have demonstrated unwavering commitment to student success, innovative teaching, and meaningful community connection. Each honoree's unique dedication and passion of leadership continue to elevate our schools and inspire those around them. We thank everyone in attendance this evening to collectively celebrate our remarkable honorees for this world's recognition. So our, our first is Ms. Heather Torino. If you can stand and do the wave, Heather. So to begin, we honor Mala High School Heather Torino. According to her colleagues, Mrs. Torino is value-added and a true woman. She's both a MAE economics teacher that can explain concepts like aggregate spending, while also being the mindfulness teacher who modeled for least eight breadth, and then returned to the scientific journal presenting the data of the study. That duality is what makes Mrs. Torino so special. In her recent work, she organized talks with renowned economics and trips to the Federal Reserve. Apparently, according to her colleagues, Heather also gets excited about sparkly things, which we added to your bag later. Uh, students are drawn to Mrs. Torino's brain and her intensity as well as her emotional safety support. To speak on her behalf, our two students, Claire Lido and James Orsierra. Claire serves as the president of DECA and currently has Mrs. Torino for honors marketing. James had Mrs. Torino in tenth grade for mindfulness class and currently serves as vice president of DECA, the student organization to which Mrs. Torino is the advisor. So we'll invite Claire and James up to the podium.
My name is Claire Lido, I'm a senior at Mala High School, and I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Torino on this incredible accomplishment and to my own highlight, just a few moments where her acceptance, acceptance of teaching and charismatic personality truly stood out. So I had the pleasure of highlighting Mrs. Torino both my freshman and new years in her marketing and advertising class and now in her honors marketing class. So as a wide freshman just out of middle school, I was still finding my footing and Mrs. Torino not only saw potential in me, but she also encouraged me to join DECA to collect trade classes. What might have seemed like a small magic power became a defining power of my high school journey. Her belief in me, spirit, motivation, and ambition that have shaped who I am today. Over the past four years, I've learned so much from Mrs. Torino, not just about marketing, but about effort, communication, and the importance of building meaningful relationships. This year alone, she's gone above and beyond to give our class real world experiences, organizing trips and guest speakers to help us better understand the business world and explore future careers. What stands out most about Mrs. Torino is her care for experiences before. She's the first to notice when something's wrong and always offers support without hesitation. Knowing that your teacher cares more about you than your performance in class is something every student should be lucky enough to experience. On a personal level, Mrs. Torino has made school today the safe and encouraging space. Whether it was community advice before DECA competition or simply asking how it was doing, her constant support has meant the world to me. She's one of the few teachers who makes you feel seen, heard, and genuinely valued, and that makes all the difference. It's no surprise that Mrs. Torino is Mala High School's teacher of the year. She's been a guiding light in my high school experience and of all, to so many others. Mrs. Keith, the dedication never goes unnoticed. I'm constantly amazed by all you do at Mala High School and correctly looking at you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Orsierra, and I'm a senior at Mala High School. I first met Mrs. Torino when she... I first met Mrs. Torino when she was my teacher for a class called Mindfulness and Resilience. Um, in this class, as a younger and shyer version of my current self, Mrs. Torino's positivity and outgoing energy was a little intimidating. Uh, however, as the marketing career went on, Mrs. Torino's class became the highlight of my day. That class taught me so many important skills that everyone should know. And it wasn't just the class that was impactful, it was Mrs. Torino. She's never judgmental, always encouraging, and on top of that, she's extremely talented. She taught me the importance of gratitude, tactics to deal with anxiety. And later that year, when I went through a really tough period of my life, I look back on those times in class and what I learned. Mrs. Torino, you may not know how much of an impact you had on me and how much you helped me, but you really did. I will never forget how much stepping on the grass with my bare feet, grounding myself to ease my anxiety, that's where I came from here. Later that, later, she became an even bigger part of my life as I became a part of DECA. People always joke that Mrs. Torino runs DECA like the military, and she does. She's extremely punctual, hardworking, and encouraging in a way that we all need. DECA is no joke, it is probably the most serious club at Mala High School, and I don't know any other teacher that could run it. This year, I was a marketing officer, which means I created Instagram posts, reels, and managed general marketing for the club. Mrs. Torino pushed me, and I'm so glad she did. The experience of this responsibility is extremely rewarding to me, and it cemented my dream to do something in marketing in the future. While being a role model to push me and everyone else at DECA, Mrs. Torino also created such a welcoming and fun environment for DECA. I wouldn't call myself a total head of city for three days a year if it wasn't enjoyable. And through visiting Mrs. Torino's direction and community building, it was always the highlight of the year. I'm not surprised at all that Mrs. Torino won teacher of the year, just like Claire. With such a passionate, hardworking, committed energy as she has, she has made a big impact on the school, DECA, and me.
Mrs. Torino, you can, um, you're welcome. Alright, we have something for you.
Oh, yay. This is so nice.
Put your shirt over there, really, it's better. I applaud you.
Do I go over here?
You're always feel comfortable, we know you're comfortable anywhere.
I'm gonna go over here. To my cherished family, Mark, Corey, Julia, my mother, of course, brother, Board of Education, Dr. Dittura, Dr. Claire, Dr. Torino, Romeo of High School Administration, John Frank, Mike Don. My trusted colleagues, especially shout out to Sarah Kszynski, Amy Ladonio, Carrie Robinson, um, my incredible department, Carolyn, Justin, Tim, and Nicky, who I proudly welcome and work there. Dear friends, students, and their families. I'm deeply humbled and fully gratitude to be recognized for this honor. I found out about this recognition on a Friday afternoon right before spring recess at some time of bell, standing in a utility storage closet. Yes, it's true, in JPP fashion, he wanted to keep the announcement quiet until it was official. He congratulated me and then asked, what do you want for lunch on the day of the event? It was a lot to process, but I made a great call with the salmon and also had a great mentor, John Pascal. This recognition is not just about me. It reflects a legacy far greater than one individual. Since I began my time at Mala High School, I taught approximately 2,224 students, not counting those I've had in more than one course. Um, that's 2,224 unique opportunities to influence the journey of even more. And I want to give a big shout out to Nancy Mariotti for running that report to me. And that does include the students that I advise in class 2015 to nineteen, twenty twenty-three, and now twenty-four-seven. Naturally, I started thinking about the economic impact of those 2,224 students, doesn't matter one. So just for funsies, I asked AI to help me calculate the total contribution that many high school graduates, what the high school graduates do as a component, removing the collegiate value variables, assuming they all into the word. Using the average U.S. salary of forty-three thousand, those students contribute ninety-five point six million per year, or about three point eight over, three point eight billion over a forty-year career, with an average investment of thirteen thousand five hundred per student, and a return of thirty-one dollars for every dollar spent, the ROI is the same. Now, income college graduates with an average salary of seventy thousand dollars, their contribution jumps to one hundred and fifty-six million per year and six point two billion over forty years. Of course, we have to check that the math is mathed, but the point is, those who teach build a chief productive citizen from sector to sector. Their knowledge becomes a foundation for the next generation. And while I may never see the full ripple effects, I will see, I plant seeds of initiative, resilience, curiosity, confidence, critical thinking, empathy, and planting. And I'm here firsthand when a student finds me or one of my trusted business colleagues telling the story of how they aced their job review, revised their resume, sent a thank you letter, and completed their first step before. I've always worked to bring real-world learning into the classroom in several ways as a trained elementary school teacher, but that bringing a sense of music to high school has only given what I do. From building crime scene brand personas and playing marketing channel bingo, to somehow getting John Stossel, who has so often worked with me, on Zoom to talk to my class, from trips to the Federal Reserve, writing business letters to my favorite brands, Hello Ikea, for us who went there today, to performing the award-winning Mrs. Fly to the Mannequin, and every experience is designed to make you happy. That same creativity and energy extends into DECA, beautiful support of Mala, so thank you so much for supporting us. And my amazing DECA co-adviser, Karen Ferguson. We've grown our chapter to ninety students, giving more young people the chance to thrive. DECA is not a club, it is a lifestyle. But my greatest strength as an educator is its measured statistics. It lives in the quiet moments of orchestrating lessons and making community contact regarding new processes because lots of spare my knowledge base. It's on Fun Fridays, the plank soup salad sandwich, or just dancing to Just Dance. It is in the breakthroughs where students once said, I can't think to try, then can. It is when I call for the good and not just the bad. Typically, parents are shocked, and it's being asked of company a child that is not here for last having a battle crisis to the hospital without hesitation. Lastly, it's bringing humanity and showing grace by being perfectly internal. It is all about the method of helping other students evolve, evolve, and make us better students to realize. I challenge my students with high expectations. I believe in them, even when they don't look good. That is my.
Claire and Jake, thank you, we know you have a good night today. Go to your next job, thank you for being here. On the way out, can we say what's the movie?
Still TV.
Thank you guys. Something to be true. Okay. Um, our next next teacher is Mrs. Donna Conrad. Mrs. Donna Conrad is love personified, and as a result, she shows up to work doing everything with a lens of love. Tough love, supportive love, big sister love, mom love. Love of teaching of history, love of service to our students and school community. Mrs. Conrad is fully shaping the curriculum to provide stronger lessons and is constantly mentoring students to be a better version of themselves. It is the warmth in the room from this love that makes students want to be there, want to be better, and want to ask questions and challenge themselves and others. Former student from Mark Pitts and his mother still think fondly of Mrs. Conrad's impact and are here tonight to share her work.
Well, hi, I'm Mark Pitts, someone you might know. Well, seen me a whole ways, but today I'm here to talk about how I've been following the whole way through this year in, uh, three years, and just talking about the critical teachers Mala has had. But today, we are here to celebrate one teacher, Mrs. Conrad, and her first service, her critical community service to Mala's community. So give her a round of applause for that. I've known Mrs. Conrad for years, having my brother, me, and my sister. She was my assistant teacher, the one that teaches me, I lay my eyes on. Me, uh, come, me, um, call me coming to, uh, the middle school. She welcomed us with a home-like, home-like welcome, a smile. Created an environment full of essence for me and my parents to love, us traveling from Aspen to the Greek city to Cleveland. This has been the first time I enjoyed history, learned about it. Me being the G's and ready for a history class, me being proud of myself and success, I couldn't disguise, finding my love for history until the desert. The extra note of question you were there. Mrs. Conrad, she's going to help us to stream us the roots of our world, the roots of our minds, and his lesson. I love the challenge and I love what I got from the challenge. Even when I wasn't on point, you see what was in my mind. The bad days, she's the rocket to my kingdom. Being helpful and being hurt, the world had a twist, COVID happened, it became harder to learn. But a tune of Mr. Boney singing and Mrs. Conrad singing, I was in my prime. Do you remember any time she emailed me or quoted you, or always checking on you? I really appreciate that, and I'm working with her. Make your private comments or emailing me, make me feel like someone is paying attention to our work, feeling accomplished, or making me feel a joy. We have a relationship, a point in life that's surely been at equal times. You are caring, loving, kind, thoughtful, encouraging, even through rough days. And one moment I looked at a speaker in typical, and I heard their, their, their degree project. Me picking her because of her strength, I felt like it because of greatness, the strength, toughness, and courage. I always wanted to hope, well, your goddess, that's, uh, your goddess of heart, from, from your kindness and helpfulness and peace. As some of your college, your courses of college, I said, you're someone that think of yourself, I mean, that think of everybody else before yourself, lead by example. As a great mentor and teacher of the race, being someone who, who was privileged to look up to, someone who volunteered her time to coach the mission for a basketball team, someone who teaches style, who genuinely takes care of her students and teachers, being someone that passionate and dedicated plays the role of self at the best basketball team, while as a teacher too. This lady is someone that makes children for over twenty years feel alive. Being a part of the race team in our community, this life deserves it for the love and precision from the mom.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lido, and I haven't spoken in front of a lot of people like this, but I do like the impact that she's made on my kids. Um, she will always send me emails, make their showings always on task, and she wanted me just to, um, as far as her teacher state, she also through her mother's state too, make their sure that they were always on task, and I appreciate all of that. And I don't know what else to say because Lamar said everything, and Lamar's the speaker, and I'm not, so. Thank you very much to what you have done for the community.
Okay, so this is my biggest fear, I knew you were gonna have to make me do this. So I have nothing really prepared, but just want to kind of talk off my heart. There's two things when I think of, and I brought my tissue. First of all, thank you so much, I am really honored and really humbled with this award. Um, when Sue and Ryan pulled me in their office and told me that I got it, I went home that weekend and I thought of two things. First, I thought of the corny phrase, it takes a village. It really takes a village, okay? My people at the ridge, my little village deserve this award. I texted people when they found out and I said, this is your award also, okay? I'm the kind of teacher I am because I have people around me who really elevate me. I mean, the people that showed up tonight, I cannot thank you enough. It's really touches my heart that you took time out of your busy nights and came for me. It's, it's really means a lot to me. The second thing I thought of was my class partners. I've been fortunate, I have worked in the district for twenty years. I started with Courtney, who's an amazing teacher, okay? I had a foundation with her, I became a better teacher. Then I got switched over to Morgan, okay? Who's one of the best teachers in the district. I know I'm a little biased, but she's one of the best teachers in the district, where I'm going to end my career in a few years. So between the two of them, I have been very lucky. I am the teacher I am because of the two of them and because of the people that are here supporting. I wouldn't be up here without, without all of them, so. I just want to say thank you. I left, um, even, you know, two of, two of the teachers, we were just at an event at Biagio, it was for our team. There's four hundred people there, and six sixth graders are presenting in front of four hundred people. And they are one of two middle schools, the rest are high schools. And I'm pretty sure they're getting an award tonight, so I'm very excited. I have to run back out to go over there to get the award, but I'm just really talking the bottom of my heart. I want to thank everyone because this means really so much to me, so thank you.
And Donna, you're right, because your village is back there beaming with pride. Morgan is holding back the tears, it's, it's really a beautiful thing, so thank you, Morgan.
Thank you so much.
So next we have Mr. Brian Donovan. So Mr. Donovan's positive energy is infectious when he enters a room, it changes. His dedication as a special education teacher is unmatched. Mr. Donovan builds meaningful, individualized relationships with each of his students, helping them feel seen, valued, and empowered. Mr. Donovan's positive outlook and unwavering belief in fresh starts makes every day a new opportunity for growth and success in his classroom. He fosters a strong collaborative rapport with his co-teachers, bringing energy, passion, and drive to every interaction. He's with great pride that we're celebrating him as this year's teacher of the year for his former school. When approached about saying a few words on Mr. Donovan tonight, Reagan, a student, immediately commented, quote, "He is the best teacher I ever had." And we have Reagan here in the crowd. Reagan, you got this.
Hi, I'm Reagan, this is what I think of Mr. Donovan. Think he is kind, kind, determined, and most personally, students at J.K.'s machine. He is a responsible human being, and he's always willing to help me and others with schoolwork, even if he's busy or doing something important. So happy that he guided teacher of the year because he deserves it. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, and by the way, thank you for all the waiting and the pseudo thoughts you know, something we have to buy.
Reagan, that was great. Reagan, that was great. Oh yeah, I know you're an officer. Thank you so much, Reagan. Great job. We give her another one. So exciting I'm saying maybe you can say either, but as I'm standing up here and I see everybody, it makes me think of a couple of things. The team that we have here in Mawa, starts with my family, wouldn't be here without them. And then I have to mention Linda, Mike Dennis, who when I was thinking about moving my life over here to Mawa, they were the ones who interviewed me, hired me. Ms. Athie was in the back, so I constantly have to remind her that without her, without you all, it totally changed the trajectory of my whole life. So this has been great. Mawa's a great place and it's a, it's a team, it's a partnership and we can see it from all of you up here, all the way down to the principals, assistant principals, the teachers that work so well together, and all of our students like Reagan, you do such a nice job, so thank you very much. Our next teacher is Mrs. Christine Pacelli. We are beyond excited to have Christine Pacelli representing Lenny Meadows as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Pacelli has an incredible ability to connect with everyone of our students. Her genuine care and dedication are felt by all and are clearly reflected in her classroom community. Two wonderful examples of her impact include the development of the Kindness Heart and Spirit Squad. Initiatives she created to inspire students to spread joy and compassion throughout the school building and beyond her classroom. Mrs. Pacelli is a core member of the Lenny Meadows family and is respected by all colleagues and families. One family in particular eagerly jumped at the opportunity to speak out with Pacelli this evening. Mrs. Miller's oldest son, who is here tonight, who is on break from college, had Mrs. Pacelli as a third grade teacher himself and her daughter currently is in her class today.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Miller and I graduated from Mawa High School in 2023. I want to start by congratulating all the teachers being recognized tonight on your Teacher of the Year awards. And I see Miss Tariel over there, I had you freshman year and all that, and that's it. So, uh, just want to thank you for all your years of service today, actually. The work you do and all these teachers does not, doesn't always get the spotlight it deserves, but the impact that you have on us students is lasting. A few days ago, my mom mentioned here that there was a chance to speak about Miss Pacelli in light of her receiving this award and I knew right away that I wanted to speak. I had Miss Pacelli in third grade, which was, uh, over 10 years ago, I'd say over a decade now. And it's something that still sticks with me to this day. Her classroom was a place that felt welcoming and calm, a space where every student felt seen and supported. She taught with a genuine kindness and patience that even at that age, even at my age of nine years old, it really made a difference. And I'm very sure that teaching third grade isn't always the easiest thing to do. I have an eight and nine year old sister that's in her class right now. So looking back, I can honestly say that her class helped shape the kind of person I've grown into. It gave me confidence and made school feel like a place where I could really grow. And I think that's really important for, uh, a third grader and kids that young. Some of my best memories from that year are the simple ones, working on class projects, going on field trips, and just being excited to come to school. I'm sure Miss Pacelli can, uh, tell you about all the, uh, the times I've spoken in class and all my great friends in there. And that says a lot about who she is as a teacher and as a person. And now, as I said before, my little sister has her this year and it's really special to see her getting that same experience. She tells me all the time about the stuff she does in class and it really reminds me of what I did in class with you. So, uh, the care and the way that you show up for your students, uh, it hasn't changed. So I just want to thank you, Miss Pacelli, for the nearly 30 years of services, talent, for the difference you made in my life and for the lives of so many others. You deserve this recognition and much more. And once again, congratulations to all the incredible teachers we've been honoring tonight. Thank you to the board, Dr. Toral, that prepared, uh, for giving me the chance to speak. It means a lot to be back here as an alumni, especially for a moment like this and to, uh, uh, celebrate an amazing teacher that I have. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicki Miller. Obviously, I think they just said, uh, he had her in third grade and my daughter Sienna is currently in her class now. I am honored to be here to speak on her behalf. When I heard Mrs. Pacelli was awarded Teacher of the Year, I couldn't think of anyone more deserving. What I, the two words that immediately come to my mind when I think of her is amazing and frogs. If you ever saw her classroom, you would know why. Miss Pacelli, you've been more than a teacher, you've been an inspiration. Your passion for teaching is infectious. Your creativity brings learning to life. Your patience and understanding creates a safe and wonderful learning environment. Your dedication is truly amazing. There's a quote that says, "Great teachers empathize with kids, respect them, and believe that each one has something special that can be built upon." Well, you're all of this and more. Thank you for believing in my children and giving them the wings to move on from elementary school. You made them feel special, important, and unique. You're very special to our family and will always hold a special place in our hearts. Congratulations.
Hi, thank you so much for this award. I don't have anything planned and I didn't really know I had to speak tonight, so just to speak from my heart. Thank you for letting me work here. I have to say, I love it here. I've been here for 29 years, third grade for 29 years and, um, I'm just blessed to be able to work with all the families and all the children in this district and all the amazing staff. Shout out to my team. Couldn't do it without them, without the support from all the admin and just the love from the district here. It's an amazing place and I'm honored and really blessed to be here, so thank you so much.
All right, our next honorary is from George Washington School, Mrs. Merz, who serves as the school nurse. Mrs. Merz prioritizes building meaningful relationships with GW families in the moment that they register. She supports students overall health while being with compassion, expertise, and provides comfort to the families of those students. Her keen attention to student health has made a true difference in the lives of GW students and their families. In addition to her care for students and families, Mrs. Merz serves as a trusted resource for staff mentoring aspiring nurses and strengthening GW school culture through her professionalism and teamwork and her unwavering skills. Although Mrs. Merz had to attend her daughter's graduation today, we thought it was still fitting to invite a guest to speak for Mrs. Merz's behalf. Tonight's guest speakers, current GW kindergarten student, Luciana and her mother, Mrs. Sierra, are here to share how Mrs. Merz's care eased their transition to GW and to speak to a lasting impact of her kindness and dedication.
Hi, everyone. It is such an honor that our little lady is more excited than anyone in this room probably to be here tonight, um, who is also Mrs. Merz's biggest fan. She had the opportunity, as well as our family, to say a few words on behalf of the amazing Nurse Merz, who cannot tend to see things, and she, she really is amazing and she should see it. Our daughter Luciana is currently a five-year-old kindergarten student in Mrs. Treean's class at George Washington. We are new to Mawa, new to GW. While we haven't known Nurse Merz for all that long, it did not take a long time before we absolutely adore her. Immediately into the school year, Luciana would name drop Mrs. Merz on a daily basis. And I thought to myself, during orientation, who's Merz? Who's Merz? She's the nurse. Trying to think who's the assistant, who, who, you know, who's who. And then I'm saying to myself, this is not good. She keeps mentioning the nurses. She realized that the ticket to the way home was to go see the nurse. You know, go see the nurse and that's it, call mom and dad. But I realized that it is just more than that. Um, so within a few months of school, it was Mrs. Merz's birthday. We did not know it was her birthday, but we were driving to school and all of a sudden Luciana started to forget. Turn around, you gotta turn around, Maria, I forgot something. And I'm saying to myself, but she forgot. Very diligent with the folder that Mrs. Treean sent. I know, I didn't forget anything. She had these tiny little pictures that she made, little icons and a seismoscope, whatever they were, little medical icons. And I said to her, this is the nurse, she'll be here tomorrow, she'll be here the next day, you can bring it to her tomorrow. She said, it's her birthday. I said, it's okay, Luciana, that she's gonna have other gifts, you can bring it here tomorrow. She said, mommy, she is not just the nurse, she's my friend. And I said, you know what, let me turn around. Because we know something at that point, it was about this little bomb that she had for her nurse. And I didn't want to read it off, so around we turned and, uh, we picked up what she had for the nurse. So yes, it is her knowledge and her skill set that makes her a great nurse. But she believes her compassion, her caring, and her being a friend to these students. And not only to the students, but to their parents. I, number one, I'm a COVID parent, I'm a helicopter mom, this is my first time, they did not come with an instruction booklet. So it's nice that I can call her up and say, listen, Luciana's not feeling so good today. Can you keep an eye on her? She has never made me feel any sort of uncomfortable to even make that phone call. She has such great energy about her and she is so easy to love, so we really love her. So speaking of little friends, Luciana has learned thanks to your amazing curriculum. She reads, she writes, she loves to write, we are blown away at this group. And, uh, she wrote some words about Mrs. Merz. Do you know what I heard? Say them.
Mrs. Merz. From the first day, I met her, she was so nice to me. Mrs. Merz always taught us that our, these things. Swords and, and scissor fights. When we are stuck, she is the best nurse ever. She is me as a cupcake.
And at the top she put, red velvet, my favorite.
She is my super girl. She is my friend. Great dad, Nick Smertz.
And just to piggyback on that Supergirl comment, it was cute that during principal week, all the kids were tasked with writing something about the principal that they thought what he does all day. And Luciana felt that he was Superman, that he, his job was to just go around the school and make sure that everybody was safe, whatever that meant, someone was in an argument, somebody got hurt, just to make sure that, I mean, everyone was safe. So this is your camera card, is Mrs. Merz, that she is Supergirl. And I had, um, the opportunity to be a class mom, which is something I always wanted to do. And I went on a field trip this year to the Norfolk County Zoo and the one kid that got hurt, not the major, but she came off the train and she tripped and she fell. I did not even know Mrs. Merz was on this trip with us because there's two kindergarten classes where we divide and conquer, we're in different areas. She fell within seconds. I turned around and there's Mrs. Merz treating her, boom. So I said to myself, you know something, she really is Supergirl, so it's very good. So just to bring this to a close, uh, we are, in the words of our school model, grateful for, for her taking care of our daughter and for all of the kids at school. We appreciate you, Mrs. Merz, more than you know and do not let her retire until my son finishes third grade. But congratulations to Mrs. Merz and to all of you tonight winning these awards. And I'll give it a little bow, I mean, I'm so excited.
Luciana used a simile, which I actually talked to a lot of her. So, wow. Thank you, Luciana. Our last but not least, Marcy Pesterich. Let me finish me. I love you, I love you. As a first grade teacher, Miss Pesterich embodies everything parents, students, and colleagues hope to find in an educated person. From day one, she fosters a collection environment that is warm, inclusive, and brimming with curiosity, where children feel safe and empowered. Miss Pesterich has an incredible ability to connect with her students, understanding their unique needs, and meeting them with patience and encouragement. Her lessons are creative and engaging, letting hands-on activities, storytelling, and interactive discussions that capture her students' imagination and make them learn to do a little adventure. She is the consummate professional. Miss Pesterich is a well-respected member of the teaching staff at Betsy Ross School and is appreciated for her collaborative spirit, her knowledge, and her approach to the world. Mrs. Donovan is a current parent of Betsy Ross School and her daughter, now JK, had Miss Pesterich as a first grade teacher several years ago. They are both here to speak about the difference that she made and the profound impact she has had on that year of educational term, here in Mawa.
Good evening, everyone. I brought one more with me. Thank you, Dr. Picaro, Dr. Fair, Mr. Hensel, for allowing us to speak here tonight. My name is Kate O'Donoghue and I'm here with my daughters Natalie and Mackenzie. My husband and I are both Mawa High School graduates and it was an easy decision that we wanted to raise our family here. The schools are phenomenal, but more importantly, our educators are unmatched. They not only enrich our children's lives academically, but also socially and emotionally. When you picture a nurturing and caring teacher, you're picturing Miss Pesterich. So many students have been lucky enough to have her and they always speak so highly of the difference that she's made in their lives. When Natalie told some of our friends that they had, she had Miss Pesterich, they're like, we had Miss Pesterich, and we were so excited. It's truly special to see former students, even those now in middle and high school, come back to visit her at family night each June. My daughter Natalie had a unique kindergarten experience during COVID, spending three quarters of the year on Zoom before returning to school masked in a completely new environment. She was incredibly fortunate to have Miss Pesterich as her first grade teacher. That year, despite masks and social distancing, Miss Pesterich made an abnormal year feel normal. Natalie loved school, she loved seeing her friends, and it was clear Miss Pesterich was dedicated to helping her students thrive in what was everyone's new normal. Her dedication truly helped Natalie grow and succeed. Beyond the classroom, Miss Pesterich was a wonderful advocate, helping us navigate the process for extra support, working with Natalie's team, and keeping me and my husband updated every step of the way. She truly cares about her students and genuinely wants them to succeed. To this day, whenever Natalie visits Betsy Ross for her sister Mackenzie, she always seeks out Miss Pesterich and is greeted with the biggest hug and a smile. Our district is blessed with so many wonderful educators and there are many deserving candidates for Teacher of the Year. We are truly lucky in Mawa, but Miss Pesterich- We are truly lucky in Mawa, but Ms. Pesterich will always hold a special place in our hearts for making a crazy year feel normal for Natalie. In fact, on the day that she was selected for Teacher of the Year, I happened to bump into her in the hall, and the first thing she said to me was, how's our Natalie? Congratulations, Ms. Pesterich, on this incredibly deserving and special award, and to all the recipients here tonight. Thank you for your hard work and for making our school district a better place for all of our students.
Ms. Pesterich, thank you for being a great teacher, and helping me learn how to play in a new school, helping me make friends, learning fun. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this award, and congratulations to everybody who received this honor today as well. I am so grateful that my mom and daddy and brother and my Ike and my Betsy family are here tonight to celebrate with me. I feel so lucky and blessed, I can't believe it's been 24 years already, in the same classroom, even the first grade, second grade, same room all these years. And I am so grateful to my Betsy family. I teach with the most talented, creative, intelligent, loving parent, hardworking women, and if you met, you know that they are. They are just the absolute best, and you know, we're just such a family. And I don't know what I would do without you all, you're amazing, and thank you for always being here for me. And I just feel lucky and blessed, and I thank, you know, the board, I thank the wonderful administrators we have, the amazing kids, the amazing students, and the supportive parents. You know, in this crazy world that we live in, through all of life's ups and downs, you walk into your classroom and you have 20, you know, little six-year-olds smiling at you, and for those six hours, nothing else matters but them. So I feel so lucky and blessed that this is my life, I love going to school, I can call it work, I call it school. I'm so blessed to go to school every day. And congratulations to everyone, and thank you for this.
After that, for Board of Education, I just actually want to share a few comments. First, really hearty congratulations to our Teachers of the Year. I mean, amazing to hear students and parents talk about you. And obviously, these are students who have learned a great deal, because as I say all the time, their public speaking skills from kindergarten, very impressive, to the alumni who came are very impressive. So Mrs. Torino, Mrs. Conrad, Mr. Donovan, Mrs. Pirelli, Mrs. Petrich, and Mrs. Mertz. Now, I and many other board members might have a little bit to share too. I have to tell you, amazing Nurse Mertz, I totally agree. Both my kids were at GW, and just, she's a very comforting smiling face, they just have all the teachers, obviously. And Mrs. Torino, I wanted to remind you that one of your 2,224 students was the A. And he's surpassing your average salary, I can tell you. Probably thanks to you, and you put up with the A C D writers, which kind of took him down. But you know what, he's doing very well today, and he really did enjoy your class, and is doing well in the rest of the year, thanks to you. And you also were the class advisor for my daughter's class. So you were involved in both of my kids' lives. Thank you very much, you were really inspirational to both of them. They may not always remember you in a moment, but they remember that for us. So anyway, thank you. Do any other board members want to say anything? Okay, again, congratulations, thank you so much, all of you.
Okay, this is the moment. We have a lot left. You are more than free to go. You can say what you'll have to.
Congratulations.
Y'all.
Alright everyone, we're going to continue with our meeting. If you are still socializing with the...
You're stuck.
You're not stuck, if you need to keep moving, maybe it's a halt. Dr. DiTaro has our next meeting, which is Strategic Plan Update. And this is our culmination of the 2020 to 2021 years. So, let's get started. What is it? Culmination culmination? Culmination? Culmination. Dr. DeSilva.
Yes, everyone, Dr. Phil, you know the director, it's right here. So, let me get started. This is culmination, was it right? Culmination of five years of hard work. These actually, these are my favorite meetings, because we get a chance to really celebrate the work of the entire district. I'm very grateful with the administrative teams here. There's been a ton of work, and the kind of funding the administrative team to make all the things you're about to see possible. I also want to thank Board of Education for your commitment to this work, and absolutely, I'm going to take some time to thank the teachers, because without them, this work wouldn't happen. So just to give you a little backstory, and I know I do it every single time, but it's the last one on this day. Five years ago, we decided to come together and really figure out how do we work the best out of the life of the community. When we came into the district 14 years ago, I was very fortunate to work with administrators that every single building was working extremely hard. The issue though, was everyone was working inside us. And we felt it was important for us to not only come together as administrative team, but talk to our community about the needs that they feel the district really has to improve year over year. With that, we took part in the numbers strategic planning meetings, and this is the product of all that work. Every single year, we report out to the Board of Education twice a year to talk about the work that's taking place each year. This presentation is going to be a little bit different. This presentation represents the culmination of five years of work. So this is a closeout of the 2020 to 2025 Strategic Plan as we begin the next strategic plan, which is 2025 to 2030. Throughout this presentation, you're missing a couple different things. There's going to be the four frames that will be introduced by one of the administrators, and then at this time, for our building administration to talk about the work that's happening at the K-5 level, K-6 level, and K-9, 12 level. What better way to show the work than the people who are actually doing it with the administrative team and the teachers? So without further ado, I want to introduce Dr. DeVino to introduce the board of directors.
Thank you. Alright, so you've heard me talk about curriculum for the last long time. But I am really proud of the work, in all seriousness, and the work that the Strategic Plan allowed us to do. Some of the goals up there, or I guess their statements. I'm just going to review, because it's really hard to see whose little words are. So the first statement we had to do, we had to update our curriculum, making sure we align to all mandates, and also creating differential instruction. And JTSS, TUSA, we should all be clapping right now. Number two, have the students start to think globally, beyond the little walls that they were learning in. So we've started that, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in the various different slides I have. Number three is to ensure that we had ongoing P that was supported by our teachers and the issues that we were running. So we've done a lot of different P's. We're trying to hear a little bit about it, but things like DeVino, or Jagger P, where we have teachers, administrators, teaching other teachers, administrators, these are all things that lead to good instruction and informed instruction. Number four, creating often and learning experiences for our kids. And then number five has to do with developing a connection between the school, our school and other schools, our school and organizations, and our school and the population, and education, and everything around that. So, I'm really, really excited to introduce our admin team. We're going to start with our elementary team. They're going to take you through some highlights, some that might be a little bit closer to this moment, as you've heard so many things in the last four years. But we're about to celebrate, so I'm going to do a fantastic call.
Good evening, everyone. I am super excited to start off with speaking about curriculum and instruction. For those of you who know, my first two years in the district, I got to be the supervisor of elementary curriculum and instruction. So it's definitely a point of pride for myself, as well as the district. And if you've heard in a lot of the speeches tonight, everyone kind of highlighted the curriculum and the instruction, and it starts back with general Mawa. As the district continues to evolve, we're committed to evolving it as well. The district intentionally reviews curriculum programs to ensure we're teaching current engagement and meaningful material. With that being said, professional development for our staff remains an important focus for the district. Some of the professional development that we have done during the last five years are related to reading and writing units of study. We have adopted reading units of study for both reading and writing in K-5, even in sixth grade, they are adopting those units, which is really exciting. And then something that we highlighted this year for the first time is what we have. I am super excited for that to continue next year with all of our K-5 classrooms. The ability that our students are developing, the way they're able to articulate themselves mathematically, watching our five rows roll is just really impressive. So I'm excited to watch that go up in the scale for our students. Something else I'm really excited that we've done here, this is the fourth year that we have instructional coaches. That ensures that we have ongoing and consistent professional development for our teachers. We are truly invested in our staff. Just making sure that, again, we're always current, making sure that our students are being taught in every step of the way, making sure that they're not just being developed academically, but socially and emotionally as well. Some of the ways that our instructional coaches are supporting are through residency cycles, making sure that our new teachers are coming into the profession and feeling confident, and then also making sure that our veterans are always involved in as well. So this is why we do that, going to continue with how we invest in our students.
Thank you. So what's exciting is Natasha's talking about all the time and effort that we put into investing our teachers. We're doing that for a reason, correct? It's for the investment that goes into our students. So I'm just excited to report that we're now in a position, the teachers are now in a position through the I-RA diagnostic and all the points that I-RA has to offer with their resources, coupled with the fact that all the hard work that went into implementing our tiered instruction, the teachers have a place that truly meets all the needs of our students. They have the resources, they have the fingertips, they have the approach, the mindset, and the understanding of how to make this happen, which is great. Because coming on, four years ago, when Dr. DiTaro was highlighting, there was a little bit of people being inside of us. Now going into this next school year, we're in a position that is not the case. It's collaboration that's happening amongst the teachers, whether they're level special ed teachers, our instructional coaches in the staff department. So we're in a really good position to meet the needs of all our students. And I'm really excited for the PK autism program that came on here this year. Those students, it's really nice to see the school-wide activities that they're participating in, and the ability to have integrated their gender barriers, which would be the case if they were not here. So it's just a really nice launching point for us. I'm excited to have the K-3 autism program here, which is a lot of excitement right now. Thank you. We have some pictures of our strategic planning action.
Okay, for the middle school, we thought it would be nice to really break you down by the department. So have to give a shout out to our supervisors, because they really did incredible work with our teachers, and they've been doing a lot of heavy lifting with everything that you were going to hear in some of the highlights. And also just the support, ongoing support from the central office team in this area, especially Dr. DeVino, thank you for all your work in Dr. MS. In terms of the ELA, the first department that kicked off. In ELA, we updated our reading selections by adding some contemporary novels and book clubs to enhance student choice and reading connections. And the new novels that were selected also reflect our ongoing commitment to diversity and creating inclusion. All of our ELA curriculum have been updated to reflect the new state standards. But beyond the state standards, because that's just amazing, we were very intentional in updating the curriculum to focus on skill development driving all of the units. And that work was supported with a tool that applied just on time. The I-RA tool that we are using right now is supporting that very specific skill work through our diagnostics and the students' mind planning. And this is mathematics department, in social studies. The emphasis has been on civil discourse, human rights, and civics, all timely issues. If you drop into any social studies classroom, you're going to see students engaged in symbolic discussions. And yes, they are engaging content in those discussions, but they're also building those essential communication skills and social skills that we know, no matter what pathway they pursue, they will lead. At the sixth grade level, all the board members are aware we have our teams who highlighted the future at a recent board meeting. And the work that they're doing with real-world problems, but also being solution finders, coming up with solutions to those problems is just fantastic. Social studies also added some literary texts in the seventh grade level. There was a different plan, but I want to highlight, this year we had a volunteer book club that got off the ground. Teachers and students brought forward a proposal to start a book club. And the book was called Black Star. And the group that participated in this volunteer book club is our current eighth graders. They gave up their lunch and recess to actually dive into a book with their teachers. And the book, it was a sequel based on something that they read at seventh graders. So I just think that speaks to the attitude that we are building up the bridge and that this is mathematics created in your own program. In the area of special education, very proud of the work that Mr. Cozine, the department's been doing, expanding use and training for the well-sourced program, helping us grow leaders and foundational skills, and our life skills program. I know this was a dream of Ms. Rizzo's, and just watching the dream play out right now is amazing, each and every day. It's a point of pride, our building, the students in the program right now operate a coffee cart, I think it's the best cup in town, if you ever want to drop in. They also partnered with MIBO. So you may be aware, they have private product towers in our life skills program, and they learn how to create perfumes and lotions and lip balms from the different kinds that they are growing in the program. It's just amazing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to someone I'm very willing to work with, Suzanne Chilhite, and I'll hand over some of the other departments.
Alright, so I'm going to highlight the mathematics department first. And in mathematics, we updated the placement test that we administer to fifth graders for middle school placement. And this was done with Mrs. Corellis How, with her for articulation between our school and JK, as well as our math supervisor Castle, and our previous math supervisor as well. Through this updated placement test, as well as our already diagnostics and other multiple data points, we're increasing participation in our grade six, pre-ado, seventh, eighth classes, which is due accelerating math programs. So that's a point of pride for sure. We also, with Mr. Sheep's assistance and supervision, we embedded geometry in all units of math at all grade levels in order to address a priority area for growth through our work. And this was identified through looking at data analysis of in-joselay performance. We're positioning our students to achieve at higher levels on state assessments through this work, by integrating in-joselay-like questions into our lessons not only in math, but in other content areas as well. In science, we're building a content asteroid through the Linkit benchmark assessments, allowing retakes, and also building in-reading strategies, such as vocabulary, morphology examination, anchor charts, and word goals. And that's not something that's typically done in science, but we are increasing those essential reading skills there as well. In world language and ASL program, we launched a new multilevel RER math class, which is a co-teaching model at the middle school level. And this is a multi-grade level instruction model that Courtney was very instrumental in having at our school, and receiving a lot of success with the students in that program. We added Mandarin Chinese as a third language offering, so that's available to students in grades seven, eight. And overall, in world language in general, we've developed common assessments and proficiency-based instruction. And these efforts have improved in, have resulted in improved STEM scores and extended eligible students for option two credit. And then finally, as Brian efforts early, earlier across all departments, we're growing into tier two small group instruction in the country and revising our two or three supports through M11 and M12.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like all my colleagues at PK5 and the middle school level, because without a foundation, at the high school level, you don't know where the flagship, you don't know where the flagship foundation, our kids are at. So, curriculum, we have, we have updated all of our courses with the 2020 and the standards and handings. And we have created numerous courses with innovative approaches. In addition, we have implemented smaller construction using data-driven approaches. Our science department is currently using Linkit to help students master content in preparation for the types of in-free activities that students are required to do in this state of the nation. In terms of authentic learning, our Funderbur internship and externship program, our pilot year, our 2022, we have three students. Last year, we had 48 students. Right now, we're in the midst of planning for this summer to go over probably 65 students, and the numbers are still there. We've created a number of work-based learning placements for our students, and have expanded our life skills program. And those students are actually using critical machines and producing products that the community can buy. Our goal next year is to move to some sort of online school. In terms of our career pathways, and I'll get to that in a minute, we had 16 students in last year's class earn endorsement. And this year, we're projected to have 25 students. We've expanded our AP courses, the high schools, the awarded AP non-gradual and AP access award, which means that our courses offer to many more students by demographic. We've also increased the number of female students in computer science. In terms of enrollment, start our strategic action plan, we have three articulation units, we now have seven. We would see Paul University, Durham Dickinson, Bergen Community College, St. Thomas's High, St. Elizabeth, NJIT. We have a relationship with our seventh university college, which is Maida Bay, for which we added seven courses this year. Of course, we used to be able to take availability. We've increased our cross-off rates from 20 to 31 in the enrollment. And we have 132 students who earn college credits in 194 classes. In the 20th and 24th school year, we have 40 graduates from class of 2024 who earned six or more credits over four years. And our students this year who are graduating will be attending colleges in 24 states and Canada. In terms of our career pathway endorsement program, in order to get a career pathway endorsement, students need to do three things. Earn 15 credits in a pathway, participate in authentic co-curricular experiments, and then either do an internship, an externship, take a college course, do community service, or actions, or get choices by ways. We have 25 projected students, the numbers are there. Who will earn a career pathway endorsement this year. And I'm really proud of the work that our team has been doing, especially our bodies. And there's some pictures of us in the administration.
I'm supposed to talk about these markers, and I really just want to say, oh my gosh, the amount of work that the people in this room, and the teachers, and the parents to support the kids, and the kids, the work for all of these things to be accomplished. And really, this is just hype. Because over the last four years, five years, you've been telling me about everything, every year, twice a year. So if you put that all together, the compilation of work is extraordinary. So I really just, from the bottom of my heart from CNI, thank you so much for constantly coming to work and wanting to push yourself even further and making programs better for kids. If you can look at those markers, we have four of them at 100%. One of them, we left at NYE, which is number two. And that's the, that's the bar that really talks about thinking globally, making connections outside, helping to complete the world around us. We feel that that's something that we want to continue to build with our students, and we have actually included it into our strategic plan. So thank you from CNI, I really appreciate the work, the hard work. Thank you to the board for supporting all of these creative engineers that are like, hey, let's take this, let's take this. It is working, it will continue to work. And the most important thing is obviously, we're doing all of this for our kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ferr, with community connections.
Thank you. I mean, wouldn't it be awesome to actually highlight community connections? Because there are two faces. You know, tonight's Teacher of the Year celebration and honoring, as well as the cohesion you feel amongst this membership team, which is the most cohesive it's ever felt for me in the last 11 years. It's very emblematic of our collective work. So we really, I just want to give a round of applause. I know it's just us, we owe ourselves a round of applause. So let's just see, these were, we're the goal statement and some of the sub-goals to support that, it was standard for community connections. And what emerged through our conversations back in 2020 on the Google In-Love Strategic Plan, were the focus on the continuation of the legacy as a community, connecting amongst and across our community. This frame focused on ways in which we can build more opportunities to work with community members in a range of forums, welcome newcomers to our community, and expose our students to opportunities beyond our classroom norms, frame of course, content norms. So what we'll see here is a little bit of overlap with our curriculum frame, as well as the SCL frame, which we'll follow. The strength of this school district, as we know, is rooted in the strength between home, community, and our schools. So as highlighted through our Funderbur partnership program, we couldn't have talked about any of the work, right? That brand is super important. Our internship, externship experiences for our students, our further development of our communication strategy for our district newsletter, streamlining email communications across the district, our T-Bird Talk Up opportunities, and celebrating our work across our school more overtly at a board meetings and the social media platforms. We believe the amazing difference drives this change. So I'll pass it off to Ms. Adams from JK, to speak more thoroughly about what this looks like at the beginning.
So a lot of what Dennis Ferrer says, I was also just going to echo, there is a sense of community and pride when you talk about Mawa. There are a lot of light brothers in Mawa who grew up in Mawa, and then went back to Mawa, and then worked in Mawa. And I think that what I read right, to see all of that in action, alumni came back to speak about teachers that they had. And so, thinking about community connections and our strategic plan, I think we're all excited to welcome families and students back into the building in 2021. And so, some of the things that we did, we had hosted parents, student orientations, tours, where we made people back into the building. And we updated our communication, so all of K-5 has renewed communication. We also send weekly newsletters, and our social media presence has increased in Instagram. And we have a lot of exciting posts, we like to do about our schools, and have fun mascots. Big Paul Gary. And we're actually, we're really fine to compete in between the schools and try to see who has the best social media presence. The flagship typically wins, but we're working with three. We also have new translation tools that are really, they make speaking to all families easy, and allow ways of access and entries for all families. And our community outreach, many people have talked about it, but the Fenderbur partnership has been really huge to K-5. It allows students to see all the opportunities that they have when they grow up. So we have lots of alumni come back, many community members, and then people who are, have fun and exciting jobs that we don't even know about, and we don't typically talk about. It gives our students excitement. In JK, Project Challenge, we started a mom trial, who, who, who loves those. We joined the National Spirit Spelling Week this year. And in K-5, we have the legal partnership, and it sounds like it might be in the foster as well. Science Day, and we also have a slew of cultural events within our community that we've participated in, and we're also really proud of. And these are all our students' actions, and I wish I could ask you for community connections.
Community connections, I came into the district in 2018, and I think it's fair to say, all of us folk, really, we're connected in ways now that is just very different. And it's so cool. Dennis, Dennis kind of coined the hashtag Mala Connects, or I think it's like, give him credit for going out, sure there's the team of folks out there, everything else. But it's a real thing. Dennis mentioned branding, Mala Connects is a real thing. And we're going to highlight some things in different areas for you. In the academic domain, with Funderbur partnerships, at the secondary level, we have hosted 165 Funderbur experts, that's across the middle school and high school. We've hosted architects, authors, scientists, financial professionals, journalists, and many more. Our Project Challenge students participated in the New Jersey Wall Fair competition.
And our sixth grade team won first, first place. These students had an opportunity just last week to visit the New Jersey Law Center for a mock trial experience. The Ridge and Mawa High School collaborated to create a career pathway assembly for grades seven and eight. And that assembly, the best part of the assembly was a panel of students who were in the pathway program or went through the pathways program. And it was just a student-to-student Q and A about what the opportunities at the high school level. In the area of the arts, visual arts, performance arts, other part of Mawa, our groups continue to get very prestigious awards and achievements. For example, our chorus district recently earned the gold rating at the North Jersey Regional Festival. Our choral director, Ms. Pareda, conducted this year's Bergen County Chorus Festival. So that was a huge time for her, as well as for us here in Mawa. Our theater department continues to raise the bar for itself. It's always been an impressive production each and every year. But this, this year's game, too, just found a way, getting this up to the lodge. Besides the impressive performance under the umbrella of Mawa Connects, they always do a performance for JK. So not too long ago, we started, as part of the transition process, hosting JK, doing a special performance for them. And we also perform for local senior citizens. And earlier this month, once again, our GNTR program hosted their annual art show in town halls. So that's been the location in recent years. Great tradition. I think the entire community can look forward to it.
Maybe you stole my opening line, Mr. Corey. I was talking about hashtag Mawa Connects, because it's a really different thing. And I heard Mr. Corey did Dr. Fair credit for it, but apparently we're not credit is over here. Ms. Rizzo, that's what you're saying, so. To continue along with the, Dr. Fair. Regarding, thanks, Harper. Regarding our different service clubs, we do have several clubs back in our coverage that are ancient service events, including the Community Service Club, Friends of our coverage club, National Junior Army Society, and Student Council. And all of those clubs at some point have these service initiatives, from clothing, food, employee drives, and efforts to support organizations such as American Cross, Tamara's Children's Foundation, and even supporting new families in Mawa or any families in Mawa that are in the, we take care of them. Our students, staff, and members also have engaged in various cultural events, such as International Night and the Lunar New Year Celebration. You know, a lot of that was through Mrs. Spello's department as well. But that Lunar New Year Celebration was made possible through an MSF grant. I believe Mr. Corey referenced it earlier. We have had hosted members of the Mawa Police Department for coffee with a cup. And those are life skills students who are invited to the Mawa Police Department to have coffee with them and talk about our community service and protecting the Mawa community in a connected and important way. We've fostered opportunities, as Mr. Corey said, for our schools to connect and blend together. And that includes the Day of Money, which is an opportunity for, I believe, our school and the high school, and I believe JK as well, to the students and parents to kind of connect with one another and play together. Of course, orchestra groups have visited our elementary schools. We have Thanksgiving, which is our life skills class, engaging with other levels for Thanksgiving feasts back in the fall. We do that each year. They also engage in a cookie exchange amongst their classes. And then also, actually, we have a collaboration with all schools to raise the system of cross knowledge for Habitat for Humanity Project that Mr. Corey was in charge of. We continue to remain focused on communication, including our weekly updates through our One Call System, the launch of a new website, and also related features, types of related features to improve accessibility for our programs and activities through our social media Instagram.
Community connections has been a very exciting place to learn. We've got educational partnerships, in particular with Redco College through a variety of departments, your art department, your social studies department, and your studies department. In addition, teachers have professional development in visual arts at both Redco College and the Montclair Art Museum. In terms of career development initiatives, we ran several parent academies for students of their parents from grade six all the way to twelve, about our career pathways program, our internship program, our dual enrollment courses, as well as our option two programs. As Mr. Corey mentioned, we have had assemblies with our middle school students, with panels of students, which has been very successful. And we've had alumni come back to speak in a variety of classes about their experiences and work with us. In terms of experiential learning, a lot of our students are taking field trips. For example, our art students will go to the Met. Our business students will go to the Financial District. And our science, our science reading students will go to our elementary schools for SC days and for Science Days. In terms of community service, Habitat for Humanity, as you know, has been doing a lot of fundraising for the house in Jordale. They will go on June second to start, to start building that house, which is really exciting for us. The Leo Club, as well as Habitat for Humanity, does a lot of work each month with access for all in Mawa. And those kids, those advisors, give up a lot of their time on the weekend to work with access for all in our community. Our Hope Club takes charge of Taking Child to Work Day, which is really an exciting day. We have a lot of kids, a lot of kids, including Dr. Repio's and Dr. Coro's kids, who all want to come to Mawa High School now, which we're happy about. But they do a great job organizing that for our, for our community. In terms of multicultural community events, this year, we had the Lunar New Year Celebration, funded by the Mawa Students Foundation. We've had International Night, our band choir. We've been the host site for Bergen County Band Choir auditions. And we're working collaboratively with Ranting as we're in our community program. And we've formed a lot of community partnerships with Mawa Police Department, our life skills class. It's really integrated activities into their program, where they have police officers come in, skip, and shoot with our students. And also, we have a variety of community-based trips, like the Rock and Holders, where kids go out for social activities and other kinds of activities.
All right, so we will see here, we have a bar progression of what we believe after reviewing all of the work over the course of the last five years, is totally changed. You'll see that goals one, three, and four, based on our work, we feel as if we are at one hundred percent completion. The goal one, mentorships have been forged through our Funderberg partnership program and our internship, externship program that we've, we've talked about pretty extensively. Goal two, we believe we are at ninety percent. We instituted town halls along with our focus program welcoming new families into our district. We've tapped into a communications consultant to improve our communication efforts as well. We've also made very conscious and purposeful efforts to work on the transitions from building to building, to make us connected as an entire school district. What we'll hear about when we discuss our SEL frame, there's some overlap here. We're still working on building the parent-to-parent piece that is also really important to, to us and the team. Goal three, we successfully built and branded our career pathways and Funderberg partnership program with an added focus on career fairs and expanding our partnership opportunities for our students. So we definitely achieved that. And lastly, we successfully connected with families for our work with our amount of families, along with the branding of our programs for individual enrollment, which is ever-growing. Big shout-out to our supervisor team for their tireless work in finding new and innovative ways to create opportunities for our kids. We also need to write and building and sustain those partnerships with more and more straight schools and diversified programs for our students beyond the subsequent four-year college option for our students. So we're really proud of what we can see, see here. Obviously, the, the piece that we don't believe we've achieved, we're going to be into the following strategic plan. So Ms. Rizzo is now going to speak to the achievements of our SEL frame.
You know, as I'm sitting here listening to each of the areas, I'm beginning to envision that notion of the hand becoming a mighty fist and what a wonderful opportunity we are creating for all of our students through all of this cohesiveness. And relative to social emotional learning, I remain so enamored by our district's steadfast commitment to social emotional learning. We all know that there was a time during which SEL or social emotional learning caused apprehension or perhaps some confusion. And by now, we've demonstrated that our diligence with SEL is really care for each student and commitment to each one reaching their potential, the potential that every parent hopes for their child. SEL is designed to build learner capacity, including grit and resilience, both in and out of the classroom. Mawa's SEL program has the intention of creating moments for the learner during which he or she experiences the fact that they have within them all that they need to meet the challenges and come out successful. We have developed an enriching environment rooted in SEL competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. We have developed our programs with the expectation that all students have opportunities to evolve into their personal best. I know that tonight, we're going to find that all initiative environmental principles are an outstanding representation of our collective dedication to each and every student. And might I invite the elementary college to come up and share?
Ms. Rizzo? So SEL, with regard to us, thinking to the community, the great things would be in our building structure that we have to make sure that we are teaching our child. We've made amazing strides, provided seeing these five years of the plan, which we've done quite, quite accomplishing. So building SEL continuing, each school now has two SEL bridges. And those SEL bridges help the morning meetings rooted in the classroom standards, as Mrs. Rizzo shared. They're also helping coordinate SEL days during the May for March. School counselors are also added across the school. And they are the classrooms, teaching SEL lessons, which are not only helping the students, but helping the teachers to continue how to support those lessons and make sure that we continue those goals. They also support students, our counselors, with developing SEL skills helps to navigate social situations. There are spaces that they need to be taught and understand how to respond or how to react in those spaces. Something that the district is really proud of is the code of conduct. Teachers and administrators work collaboratively to, to develop a code of conduct across the K-5 school that where people believe that every, every student has the right to be part of this supportive and safe learning environment. And where we want to recognize those positive behaviors, make sure they are recognized. And then with regard to this conduct, it's an opportunity for us to teach, learn, and grow. The code of conduct was implemented this year in promoting consistency across all of our buildings, which makes us sure that we are, with regard to our expectations and our response at this time. With supporting families, the district has launched a website, mindfulmawa dot R T, with resources for home and also hosted numerous parent academies to build home-school SEL partnerships. Some of those are Power Your Child, Understanding SEL, and Castle. And the other was the Nerds of Art Approach in responsive classrooms, which is the name of this district. Cultivating a Positively Learning Environment. You'll see that the stale infusion of the SEL practices during our school-wide morning meetings, which such great work was taking place during that time. And in each classroom, they're helping build our classroom communities. And the classroom lessons are fostering empathy and stronger communication. And events such as the May for March, promote educational well-being school-wide. It really does give us an opportunity to provide extra attention to mindfulness-based activities. And we've had activities such as mindfulness yoga. And I believe one of the students was talking on this, this today, was speaking about having the opportunity to take his shoes off and put his feet to the grass and just ground ones on. So it's just showing the great work that that's happening. And here are some slides from our Instagram.
Okay, in terms of SEL at the middle school, we're very proud of all of the hard work that we have been doing with the administrative team, as well as with our SEL bridges and our school counselors. We've focused on targeting SEL forwarding through our school counselors pushing in to the PE and health classes periodically to help the students to develop and develop their SEL competencies, which Ms. Rizzo referenced earlier. And the way that we do this is we meet as a team. We also take feedback from our teachers. There are observations of students that really focusing on what each grade level needs, some instruction, it's guidance, and some support with. And that's what our counselors focus their talks for the students on. And we've been doing this for the last seven years, and it has been very successful. We have student-centered initiatives, including the Alex Week. That is a week typically in April or May, when our PE health teachers and our counselors create specific activities in PE and classes and those around the building to cross enrollments. Of course, we still do May for March. And SEL days. SEL Day was referenced earlier by the elementary school. At every coverage, SEL Day has truly become an amazing experience where all of our teachers are participating by creating teacher-led workshops for the students. And these are high interest workshops. There's been very diverse offerings, such as Spanish music dance party, which is a very big fan favorite. Check out our Instagram, you can see Mrs. Murphy, Mrs. Harris, dancing students. Storytime with Legos, Chill Out, Heal Up, Nice Back Recovery, it's a big favorite back in December. Becker, Charlie, and the Night Sky, and many, many others. About sixty offerings each SEL Day. So we did have our first SEL Day this year, the day before our winter break. And we are planning another one for the end of June. We continue to celebrate our students through Students of the Month and May for March, and Fridays, those are programs that we have in place for a very long time, since I've been here in Mawa, just twenty-four years. But we continue to enhance shape those programs and make them even better each year. And we do have the support of our work for each of us. Each morning, we start the day with a positive quote, telling you more messages. And then we try to use that to promote a positive school culture. And then we also, of course, have our fun and purposeful spirit days in the weeks throughout the school year. Along with Mawa High School, we've designated a series of free breaks or weekends throughout the school year. And of course, as Mr. Corey referenced earlier, we have two SEL bridges per school. Those SEL bridges help to guide Mawa's SEL best practice. Those SEL coaches help to guide and outline SEL best practices for our faculty and staff for the majority of students.
Under the SEL umbrella, we're also with the building programs for students beyond classroom, after-school activities. I have to leave, lead with the middle school sports program. Just a few years ago, it did not exist. And I think it's worth noting, Dr. Fittorro, like, I'm sure you're proud of so many new children tonight, but I hope middle school sports is at the top of your list every day because we have everything we have right now because Mike sat down, we're meeting a few students in the conference room, and just started the conversation. The next conversation was a cup of coffee with Mr. Pelletier, with Vincent Ollie, and making it all happen as well. And right now, in three years' time, we have the most comprehensive athletic program at the middle school level in the county, and I'd actually say the state. We've grown very quickly. We have, in the fall, boys and girls soccer. We have cross-country. We have girls volleyball. In the winter, we have boys and girls basketball. And then, right now, in our spring season, we have track field. And there's over 100 kids on Mrs. Pico's track field team. Yesterday, they won the league championship and performed very well. I sent out a note to our parents and guardians today about some of the special performances. So, we are new kids out in the lot, but I'm sure many of you know, we've already won any soccer championship. All of our basketball soccer teams have gone in and took deep runs in the playoffs. And that's not why we aren't doing it, but it's great to do it, right? We want great test scores, et cetera, but we're certainly competing and making ourselves known in the league. You don't have to just be an athlete to go to have a place at the bridge. We're also building our menu of club offerings. This year, for example, through the support of the MSF, we were able to add a future engineer in club. And this year, we got their feet wet. They went to the high school, worked with the high school students, and were glad to throw in there to get some notes. And I just sat down with the advisor, this Chuck, new class student, and we started planning out the competitions that we are going to enter next year, and we are so excited about that. Through the help of my buddy John here, we have new opportunities for our students to participate in the marching band, middle school students. If you go to the Friday game football game, you'll see them in the stands playing with their high school peers. Also, our students have an opportunity to perform in winter guard and percussion room. The award-winning winter guard and percussion room. So proud of all the students who have participated in that. This has been a big focus of us, of ours, over the last couple of years in terms of helping grow the number of students involved in clubs, sports, performing arts, et cetera. I'm proud to share with all of you tonight that this year, in random numbers, over 67% of our students are involved in one activity at the bridge. Many of those students, to give you an idea of that number, that's 412 students that are involved in that one activity. And the chart that we have that I recently showed the central office team, many of those students are involved in multiple activities. And that's something at the middle school level, as we're adding programs, we're very mindful to help our young students balance all of those opportunities. So, our coaches, our music directors, the club advisors, they all work together so students can participate in multiple activities and not feel like they have to choose one over the other. Another video under SEL at the middle school level, it's field trip experiences. So, we are known for our Frost Valley trip and our eighth-grade trip, of course, but now we're also adding a seventh-grade trip. And I give credit to Mr. Pavlin when he was involved with our HSO. That started the other seventh-grade trip because at any HSO, Mr. Pavlin, our account to our mom, to state, raised the idea. Suzanne and I tried to get a fluff answer to them, the next day they raised the idea again. And I'm proud to say that we now have a seventh-grade and a day trip that our students enjoy. This year, they went to many, many more times. We've also implemented our transition from five to six and eight to nine to make sure our students are ready to hit the ground running in our respective schools. I just met with the fifth-grade students after implementation this week, and I assured them that the bridge will be a very familiar home for their child before they begin show up in September. We've already hosted them in March. Tomorrow, Suzanne and Marley, we're hosting the entire fifth grade again, and then, of course, over the summer, they come in with their families. So, we're really proud of the work that we are doing with the transition work. Under SEL, we're also mindful of school safety and security. We've implemented several teams that are focused on looking at data, identifying trends, talking about situations, but more importantly, coming up with proactive measures to make sure everyone is healthy and safe. Some of that work is being done through our student support data team, our school safety climate team, and our school threat assessment team. And then, of course, this year, we were fortunate with the board's support to add a school security officer, who feels like he's been there for many years. He's already a valuable member of our team, working with our students each and every day, and it's just an actual resource for us. Thank you.
All right, so at the middle school level, in terms of SEL, for communication and resources, last year, we did a collaboration with our SGA, created a Talk4Every Program, and I know Dr. Farrell reports on monthly, where we recognize, well, first, we created pillars of positive behavior and good character, and every month, we recognize a faculty member and one student who is kind of is training our students to kind of see good in all that we do and see they could be good character and encourage them to demonstrate that character daily. We also have, you know, SEL is pretty much an everyday experience, actually, whether it's Mindful Monday, whether it's Words with Wisdom Wednesday, and also our Thunderbird Thursdays. Dr. Fittorro, we're the most involved for the month of March because we turn into the Mindful Monday Music March. And so, every Monday during the month of March, we have the students select musical selections to play throughout the passing of the periods, in which Dr. Fittorro will text me and judge the song selection of what just equates. So, in terms of implementation and support, as you heard tonight with the High School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Arino, right before this strategic plan, when you had mindfulness, the class began, there was only 22 students in the very first year that it ran. We're happy to say that next year, there are 26 student requests for that course, so we continue to expand it to four sections next year, which is amazing. And in terms of student support, we did, we got a grant through Bourbon County Food Services for $7,000, and we were able to create a confidence closet for students who may not have a piece of clothing and have this type of thing, they can just go to the confidence closet, be quiet, and we can publicly support them throughout that process and their needs. So, a lot of exciting things, and then just to touch on what Brian said as well, we have implemented the correct sets of teams, not just at high school, but across the district, and working together with the implementation of the form of the teams and working as one unit, so to be right.
Here's some, obviously, images relative to our SEL in action. And here's our bars. Sorry for the SEL, I'm a little bit of a tough career, I guess. We didn't put 10% on everything, but nonetheless, there's always an opportunity to grow. Based upon all that was shared by the building administrators, SEL for our lower community remains at our forefront. We continue to believe that when students feel connected to the schoolhouse through the supportive learning culture rooted in growth with each individual's personal potential, we can note our progress in academics and the not-so-so people and personal skills so essential to be a productive member of our society. For Goal One, in the area of curricular offerings and experiences around SEL, we've received 100%. In the area of Goal Two, we've achieved 90% of our goal in cultivating a cultural appreciation for each of us in our retired community partnership. I want to note on Goal Two, that our Habitat for Humanity and Teams Initiatives contribute to those in need with housing and filthy wells, and there is still time for the community to donate to those causes. Goal Three, we've achieved 100% of our goals by providing opportunities for parental enrichment. As Dr. Farrell hinted to, we do have more work there, and we have plans in place. Goal Four, we've reached 100% of our expectation there, and again, then into the Board of Education, we now have guidance counselors, grades K through 12. Goal Five, we've reached 100% of our goal relative to PE opportunities for teachers and staff. And might I close by saying, SEL programs at Mala have the intention to build within the adults and children the understanding that our determination and future comes from our own efforts and actions and are not bound to our past.
Thank you, Ms. Arino. I'm going to close this out. Along the lines of facilities, what I want to talk about, first of all, we've always ever set forth for week three's strategic plan. Some of the things we can look up on to the slide, which you probably didn't see. They talked about regularly evaluating our learning spaces. Talked about upgrading our learning spaces. We talked about creating innovative learning spaces that allow our students to thrive. And most importantly, they talked about identifying spaces and adjusting spaces to ensure that every student is able to access their educational experience without boundaries. So, what I want to talk about over the next couple of slides, I'm not going to go chapter and verses to each bullet, but there's a lot of commonalities across the elementary schools. So, if you look at the first two elementary schools, Bets Ross and GW, and it continues on for Leonard and Meadows and Joyce Summer School. Across the elementary schools, we upgraded our fire alarm systems. I know it's not the exciting upgrade, but those are the essential things that we need in order to ensure that our kids are safe. Aiding projects have been done throughout the district in consultation of county councils. We're very grateful for that partnership. HBC upgrades and replacements have taken place at GW, Leonard and Meadows, and Joyce Summer School. Window replacements at Bets Ross School and an innovation lab at Joyce Summer School. This summer, we're putting a work in on the new gym on an HBC replacement, temperature controls, and there's still more work to be done. At secondary level, a large amount of work happened at secondary level as well. Moving work happened at both buildings, but still more work needs to be done there. Window replacement at both buildings, but again, more work needs to be done. Hopefully, everyone has made a little experience with grandstands at Mala High School. It's definitely a point of pride and it enhances the spectator experience watching our students perform. Resurfacing the new track, and the center furniture upgrades at Mala High School. Those are just, to name a few, projects. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the financing facilities team. Four years ago, I was fortunate enough to work with them in our work together and getting able to develop different forecasting schedules so we're responsible not only to our district, but to our taxpayers. All of this work that I just started to speak about, total $10.9 million. All of that work is happening within our operating budget. And that, for me, is a point of pride because there has been tremendous network that happens so far over the past five years. I said there's more work to be done, but the strategic thought process and assessing of our abilities has allowed our ability to be, continue to provide space for our students that the community can be proud of. That being said, what I want to share with you is, throughout the district, our newest building is over 20 years old. Throughout our district, we have buildings that have character, let's say that. And that is something that is special for our district, but with that, we have to be really thoughtful on top of things to make sure that the English structure is in place. The work that the financing facilities and the board and ministry team has done with land services to come in and do a really diagnostic assessment of our facilities have aided in our understanding and making thoughtful decisions and improvements throughout these past five years and will continue over the next five years. I was going to put a bunch of pictures of our roof, of our roofs throughout the district, and I think that was going to get really well. So, we have a picture of HBC there. The picture in the middle is our J.K. Innovation Lab, which is absolutely spectacular. And then, a picture of our, I believe, our new HBC units at GW School. Everyone's talking about these bars, so let me talk about the bars for facilities. As much as I'm extremely proud of the work we committed, that not only the board and ministry team, I have to give a shout-out to Brett Romero. He has been just a gem for us of being on top of all projects and overseeing that. And I'm so grateful for Tom coming this year and work with us on these projects and continue to. Facilities is something that's never going to be done. As much as we're proud of the work that's happened with HBC roofs, windows, classrooms, field services, and grandstands, as we know, and I know that Mike Gallow has, I believe, the total square footage of our facilities memorized, I do not, it's something that's going to be a ongoing focus, not only in the first strategic plan, but in the second strategic plan. So, that's why we have not completed 100% of the goals, but hopefully, what I share with you, the summary of just some of the projects showcases the commitment that we have to ensure that we are evaluating creativity spaces and assuring that all of our students have access to our facilities. To just close out, and I appreciate everyone's patience, I appreciate everyone's attention to this, to close out, this work has been extremely important to all of us. This has been our roadmap from 2020 to 2025. I just want to take a moment to thank the administrative team. I started that way, I want to end that way. The commitment that every single school, every single department has had to this work is the reason why all of this is a reality. I also want to thank the teachers. The teachers have been walking alongside us every step of the way, and the Teacher of the Year Award really encapsulating the special moments that the teachers create each and every day, and we have all of these products on top of the impact that they're making to our students. So, administrative team, thank you very much. Board of Education, thank you very much for your support and your commitment to this work. I look forward to starting 2025 to 2023, which is going to be a long one. So, thank you very much. Just like I did at the Teacher of the Year Award, I would love to maybe share with you and say, I'm so grateful for you to be here. You are more than welcome to go home to your families and enjoy your time.
Back here, about fifteen minutes? Okay, very good, thank you, very nice.
I gotta go into there. So, find your ticket, Jofflin. I think I have to get my tray under, not strike me.
Yeah. No. No, it's not.
All right, so, um, lighting and a motion to register, uh, to reconvene as well as activity. Um, Mr. Denise, headed by Mr. Timmy Jackson. Thank you. Um, all right, and our last report. Um, Mr. Lang, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, Mr. Romero updated us that the H D A C is live and working. And George Washington School, after being tested, and it's working so well that Mr. Romero told me today that we need to ship them over to the other schools.
Okay. Very nice. Um, Dr. Fain, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I promise it will be great, I know it's great. So, uh, you'll see on the agenda, we have a number of recommendations for our comments. So, we hosted, I know that we shared with you at a previous meeting, that we hosted the Maua County Job Fair at Maua High School several weeks ago. And really proud of our team, that all current teaching and administrative assistant vacancies haven't filled for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, currently pending your approval this evening. Uh, we are in the process of interviewing for a remaining supervisory position for a secondary special program. So, that's super exciting, uh, really excited about the talent that's going to be hopefully returned. Uh, you'll see, if you look behind you, Harley Taylor, congratulations to her on an outstanding day at Big North Patriot League Championships. Harley took home the gold in both the girls' hundred meters and two hundred meter race. And in the process, she broke this new record in the girls' hundred meter race, of running a blazing time of twelve point three three. So, you'll also see a number of names. We recently, yesterday, had a college signing day for student athletes, uh, that took place in the Maua High School Media Center. Uh, family, friends, and teammates were invited, uh, to join the athletes for the signing ceremony on a special day. So, uh, you'll see, on this list are students, the sport which they're assigning onto, as well as the college they will, uh, join in. I shared with our board during March's board event meeting, uh, The Adventure of the Burber Bear, aims to educate the public on how to handle bear encounters introduced to us in the community. And just recently, you'll see here, a screenshot, uh, that the book was featured in the Maua Patch article, as well as on the radio. And we have our high school drama club. Um, congratulations for receiving three nominations to this year's Metro College of High School Theater Awards. For the musical production, Honey Bingo, Zachary O'Connell, for outstanding performance by a featured actor. George Pritchowski, for outstanding graphic design. And Eevee Kurchinski, for outstanding achievement by a staging manager. And lastly, we have a retirement to announce. Instructional parent professional, Rita Marsillo, from Lonnapi Meadows School, who has given twelve years of service, uh, to our district. Uh, she has served as a dedicated parent professional, uh, over the past twelve years in Lonnapi Meadows. And during this time, she has supported countless students in a variety of capacities, whether assisting a child at a diner, socially or emotionally. She was always ready to lend a helping hand and make any meaningful impact. As Rita looks forward to spending more time with her family and embracing new adventures in retirement, we want to express our appreciation for all she has done. We wish her nothing but the best in this chapter of her life. At our next board meeting scheduled for June eleventh, our goal is to honor our district retirees. So, we formally invite everyone to join us again here at our school. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. Um, my report this evening, um, do you have an accolade to share with all of you? And I'd like to congratulate, uh, the whole board, um, in receiving, um, recognition, uh, from the New Jersey School Board Association. We are a board certified board, and I'm not sure that sounds right, but board certification. Um, Maua has achieved this, um, and this is through, um, credits that we received for things like strategic planning, for professional development as a board, our board self-evaluation, and our board training that we pursue at the board retreats. Um, so, this is, uh, something that we are going to be honored with, um, next week, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, um, at, uh, one of the, um, Maua County School Board meetings. Um, so, again, congratulations, um, I think it will speak, um, to our board as well. Um, it will indeed speak to, um, the importance of the team, how we work well together, um, and it also talks about our commitment to effective governance and continuous improvement as a board. So, again, uh, you know, hopefully, Monday, Wednesday, and I think at June eleventh meeting, we may have, um, a presentation from our representative, uh, class. Um, the only other thing I had is, interestingly, Dr. Fair, I'm gonna shiver about the top story in T-Birds, uh, for April. Um, the student was Saradod Mel Conien, um, grade eleven, for being inspired and determined. The teacher wrote, "He works diligently to complete all his tasks, and he wants to do well, not just for the grade, but for the genuine desire to learn." Um, and then, um, the teacher was Jennifer Ossetti, for science, and it was for trusted. Um, and the student wrote, "Change the way of creating an environment in our classroom that's opening and inviting. Students know it's a safe space where they can be their authentic self." And it really reminds me of something that that statement that came out when we did our audit, um, our D E I audit, and enough how that seems to be a very important piece for, um, us to create an environment where students feel safe and can be their authentic selves. So, I thought that was very important. Um, the only other thing to mention is our Christian Mertori, who was the fir-, is the first high school diver, um, to earn the, um, the record athlete.
I gotta go in there. I'm applying for a state given for joblin. I think that's the amount of trade under that, if you're not striking.
No, it's not.
Alright, so, um, by making a motion to withdraw, uh, to reconvene as well at the meeting, um, this Denise seconded by Mr. Timmy Jansen. Thank you. Um, alright, and our last report, um, Mr. Lang, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, Mr. Romero updated us that HJC is live and working and to Washington State School after being tested and it's working so well that Mr. Ripley told me today that we need to teach them from kindergarten to school.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I promise it will be great, I know it's great. So, uh, you'll see on the agenda, we have a number of recommendations for our comments. So, we hosted, I know that we shared with you at a previous meeting that we hosted the Lurin County Job Fair at Mawa High School several weeks ago. And I'm really proud of our team that all current teaching and administrative assistant vacancies have been filled for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, currently pending your approval this evening. Uh, we are in the process of interviewing for a remaining supervisory position for a secondary special program. So, that's super exciting, um, really excited about the talent that's going to be hopefully to join our team. Uh, you'll see, if you can look behind you, Harley Taylor, congratulations to her on an outstanding day at the Big North Patriot League Championships. Harley took home the gold in both the girls hundred meters and two hundred meter race. Again, in the process, she broke this world record in the girls hundred meter race of running a blazing time of twelve point three three. So, you'll also see a number of names. We recently, yesterday, had a college signing day for student athletes that took place in the Mawa High School Media Center. Uh, family, friends, and teammates were invited to join the athletes for the science ceremony on a special day. So, uh, you'll see on this list are students, the sport which they're assigning onto as well as the college they will, uh, join in. I shared with our board during March's board event meeting, uh, The Adventure of a Burrow Bear aims to educate the public on how to handle bear encounters and reduce risk in the community. And just recently, you'll see here a screenshot that the book was featured in the Mawa Patch article as well as on the radio. And we have Mawa High School Drama Club. Um, congratulations for receiving three nominations to this year's National College of High School Theater Awards for the musical production on Anything Goes, Zachary O'Connell for outstanding performance by a featured actor, George Pritchowski for outstanding graphic design, and Evi Kurchinski for outstanding achievement by a stage manager. And lastly, we have a retirement to announce. Instructional paraprofessional, Peter Marsillo from Lannep Meadow School, who has given twelve years of service to our district. Uh, she has served as a dedicated paraprofessional over the past twelve years in Lannep Meadow. And during this time, she has supported campus students in a variety of capacities, whether assisting a child academically, socially, or emotionally. She was always ready to lend a helping hand and make any meaningful impact. Ezreal looks forward to spending more time with her family and embracing new adventures in retirement. We want to express our appreciation for all she has done. We wish her nothing but the best in this chapter of her life. At our next board meeting scheduled for June eleventh, our goal is to honor our district retirees. So, we formally invite everyone to join us beginning here in the school. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. Um, my report this evening, um, do you have an accolade to share with all of you? And I'd like to congratulate, uh, the whole board in receiving, um, recognition from the New Jersey School Board Association. We are a board certified board, and I'm not sure that sounds right, but board certification. Um, Mawa has achieved this, um, and this is through, um, credits that we received for things like strategic planning, for professional development as a board, our board self-evaluation, and our board training that we pursue at other board retreats. Um, so, this is, uh, something that we are going to be honored with next week, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, um, at one of the Lurin County School Board meetings. Um, so, again, congratulations. Um, I think it will speak, um, it will just speak to, um, the importance of the team, how we work well together, um, and it also talks about our commitment to effective governance and continuous improvement of the board. So, again, uh, you know, hopefully Monday, Wednesday, and ten, and I think at June eleventh meeting, we may have, um, a presentation from our representative of the class. Um, the only other thing I had is interestingly, Dr. Fair, I'm gonna shiver about the top story in T-verse for April. Um, the student was Saradod Malponian, um, grade eleven, for being inspired and determined. The teacher wrote, "He works diligently to complete all his tasks, and he wants to do well not just for the grade, but for the genuine desire to learn." Um, and then, um, the teacher was Jennifer Coseny for science, and it was for trusted. Um, and the student wrote, "She has a way of creating an environment in our classroom that's opening and inviting. Students know it's a safe space where they can be their authentic self." And it really reminds me of something that that statement that came out when we did our, um, audit, um, our DEI audit, and then how that seems to be a very important piece for us to create an environment where students feel safe and can be their authentic selves. I thought that was very important. Um, the only other thing to mention is our Christian Mertori, who was the first, is the first high school diver, um, to earn the, um, the record athlete of the week in that was seen also as the New Jersey state diving champion. So, anyway, congratulations, uh, Christian. That's all I have for this evening. Um, board committee reports. John, down there, Mike?
Very quickly.
Mike?
Finance committee met once, uh, since our last board meeting. We discussed, um, uh, the trajectory of our finances to close out this year. We have a very preliminary estimate of where we think we're gonna end up. And at our June eleventh meeting, we'll have a resolution to transfer a potential amount of money to Apple or May's reserves. The other thing we talked about briefly was the preparatory steps for the referendum, um, and obviously gave a big part of our eleventh meeting as well. And access for all, I finally attended one of their meetings recently, and every time I go to one of their meetings, they are an amazing group of people. They have a continuous stream of events for their clientele. They have some big news that'll probably be public very soon that I won't share tonight, but very good for them. Um, they really have their act together in terms of serving their clientele, many of which are obviously Mawa students, and we look forward to developing that partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Um, are there any, uh, board member remarks this evening? Okay? Um, or, oh, I'm sorry, it's, I, I really apologize, it's very hard to see. I'm gonna sit down here so I can see, it's very hard to see. Um, Mr. De Silva.
So, real quick, and I, if I can try to grab the microphone before we even issue, that is, I really wanted to, uh, take it, after the presentation, just to thank everybody. I think as board members, we have a better idea of most of the incredible amount of work that goes into, I think we saw on screen, and I know the presentation was really great, but I think, you know, I guess we have a better, a better view to it than most, and I think we still don't fully understand the amount of work that goes into the changes and the things that we saw, uh, in the presentation. And talking about the, you know, the goals that we are today, rather than, I think it's more appropriate to, instead of looking at them as, you know, percentage of completion, as, to look at it rather as a percentage of integration, right? It's completion, you know, like, have done within it, or not. These are things that are harder from what we are now. It's, it's, it's that level, these things are integrated into what we do, it doesn't go away perpetually, it's, you know, um, I guess, I don't think that we really grasp the amount of work there, and it's really, I wanted to thank, you know, the administrators, certainly, you know, you guys, um, the teachers, because it's tremendous amount of work, um, you know, the corporate teachers. But, but, we're talking about points of pride, and that's, I know that we should be drinking and, I might add, but, that, that really is, you know, not a lot of schools do what we did here, and I would venture to say that we suppose we did do it as well. And I think it really is, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, the future years. Go from zero to zero, right? Now, just a little.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. I got very important points today, and we continue the work, continue the work, so. Um, alright, shall we move on? I didn't say anyone else, okay. So, uh, let's take old business seventeen, um, we have A and B, um, and a motion on the floor. Um, so, can you see, Mr. De Silva seconded by Mr. Dowell, um, Mr. Lang, roll call please.
We'll call seventeen and fifty. Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Saviar?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Dowell?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yes. Um, now, let's take eighteen, A two S. Eighteen S, we have a motion on the floor, please. Um, Mr. Timmy Jansen, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Roll call please, Mr. Lang.
Eighteen A S, Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Saviar?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Dowell?
Yes, I just wanna highlight, uh, look at, uh, first, both of these students also have been given some picking cables, as well. I also have three check scoops game from, one one nine five eight seven, one one nine six four one, one one nine five seven six.
Yes. And two, Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yes. Um, alright, now, let's take, um, new business person now, let's take nineteen A separately. We need a motion, um, please second, Mr. Dowell, and second by Mr. Hughes.
Nineteen A, Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Saviar?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Dowell?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yes. Alright, um, and now, we generally take retirement separately as well. Um, so, let's take nineteen B, saying, Mr. Marsillo, for her twelve years of service to the Mawa High School, and I wish her all the best in retirement. Um, we need a motion, and the second, Mr. Dowell, second by Mr. Hughes. Roll call please.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Saviar?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yes. Now, let's complete, uh, the section, nineteen C to N N. Let me have a motion on the floor, Mr. Denise, seconded by Mr. Timmy Jansen. Roll call please.
Dr. Morty?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Nineteen L L.
Mr. Copeland, turn.
I wanted to highlight nineteen L L, and I wanted to thank the administration for making this a priority, uh, for anyone who doesn't have it in front of them, it's the creation of school security officers, uh, Betsy Ross, George Bosch, Mr. Lapae, H A K. Um, those four officers will be joining the officers we currently have at the Raging High School. So, thank you again for making that a priority, it's something we've been talking about for a couple of years now. Uh, I look forward to seeing if we can hire and get them installed in those schools, and it's gonna be great additions, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Mr. Cop, uh, wait, Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Saviar?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Jansen?
Yes.
Roll call please.
Yes. Alright, public, let's do public questions or comments, public participation, working ages, and importance, with five levels, except that at this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues, school matters, and community issues. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to answer your questions to number one, and your remarks to know all within three minutes. If you're representing a group, please identify yourself, and your position. If you're a personal individual, please give us your name and address. Need a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Dowell, we are officially open to the public. Seeing no coming forward at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Uh, Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Um, I do now need a motion to recess again to executive session. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Denise, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you, everyone, and have a great meeting.